Would a clerk please call the roll?
Mrs. Capellini?
Here.
Mr. Fry?
Here.
Mr. Hanum?
Here.
Mr. McCann?
Here.
Mr. Richardson?
Here.
Ms. Stow?
Here.
Mrs. Westfall?
Here.
All seven members of City Council are present, so we'll get started with our City Council meeting for March 15, 2021. I welcome everybody that's joining us via Zoom. If you have, if there's any guests or people joining us that have questions, please let me know. You could use the chat function or speak up. With that, I'd like to have Mr. Hanum lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under additions to the agenda tonight, Judge Bonfiglio is joining our Zoom meeting, and rather than have him have to hang around for the whole meeting, I've spoken to him, and he is willing to be moved from Agenda Item 18 to Agenda Item 5A. So we'll go to Judge Bonfiglio and Agenda Item 18 right after Agenda Item 5. I have no additions to the agenda. However, you were emailed this evening, Information Items C and D, which are the minutes from the Board of Architecture Review and the Municipal Plan Commission from last week on March 10. Mr. Fry, do you have any additions?
Mr. Mayor, I know that we saw the passage of an immense piece of legislation at a federal level that included money with state and local funding, and I was wondering if we could chat about what, if any, impact they may have on the city of Slovenia.
All right, let's, let's add that as Agenda Item 21, federal legislation. In the meantime, Mr. Schreier can prepare himself for that item. He and I have discussed it. Any other items, Mr. Fry?
Yep, that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Or from members of City Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I request to add a brief update about the Dora expansion.
All right, let's do that as part of the downtown master plan discussion. We can make that 7B, Dora Expansion. Anything else from members of City Council? Hearing none. Is there a, let's go to members of staff. Mr. Sanford?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schreier?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Captain Miller?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Captain Miller is joining us tonight in Chief Snorer's absence. Thank you for being here. Mr. Aller?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
And Mrs. Brining?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Is there a motion to approve our agenda as amended?
Moved.
Second. Moved and seconded to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, and those meeting minutes from March 1, 2021 are approved. Moving on to Agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I think that was the, that was the modification of the agenda.
Excuse me, it was. That was, the agenda is approved. Now we need approval of the meeting minutes from March 1, 2021. Mr. Fry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move passage or approval of the meeting minutes for the council meeting of March 1, 2021.
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded for approval of our meeting minutes for March 1, 2021 as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, and those meeting minutes of March 1, 2021 are approved. Now, moving on to Agenda Item 5, a COVID update. I can tell you that the latest report I have is that the city of Slovenia has no workers out on COVID leave or COVID isolation at this time. I don't know if, Captain Miller, you can confirm that, but I know your police officers are beginning to be vaccinated.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We have no one out on either isolation or quarantine at this time, and we're sitting about 50% of our staff has been vaccinated.
That's good news. Thank you, Captain. So the city workers are not currently being affected, and as a result of the reducing numbers of COVID cases and the availability of vaccine, and I know at least a few of us have been vaccinated, I would like to tentatively propose and plan that we go to a hybrid meeting for our next meeting on April 5, subject to change if those numbers begin to turn the wrong direction. But I'd like us to at least have an option for those willing to meet in person, those preferring to meet via Zoom. We will continue the Zoom meeting until we're all comfortable being back in the room. I'm open to your comments about that, but that's three weeks off, and unless the numbers turn the wrong direction, which is possible, I think we should plan on meeting, having the option to meet again in person.
I personally would feel comfortable with that timeline. That would be, that would be a good option.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson.
Agreed.
I agree, too.
I agree.
I'll have to lay down. I agree, too.
All right, it's.
And I'm in on that as well.
Well, it sounds like you might all be coming. If, if that's the case, we can talk about not having the Zoom meeting in three weeks, but that's a ways off. Let's stay with it for now. We'll need to continue the YouTube for certain, but if we're all going to be present, perhaps we won't need the Zoom meeting going on. But I'll make that final decision as we get closer. If there's no further comments about COVID or our plans for the next meeting, I'd like to move on to Agenda Item 18, moved up from Agenda Item 5. This is a change in the court to create a new position. Judge Bonfiglio has been kind enough to join us tonight, and Judge, if you're willing, would you give us a description of what you're asking for?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks to everybody for letting me to pitch this new position. The title would be Probation Liaison Clerk/Special Docket Officer. Sarah is the, Sarah Coley is the individual we're speaking about. She's currently, well, she was our chief deputy clerk for about a year, and then the court did some reshuffling of duties and responsibilities. Our clerk of courts, Nita Messersmith, retired at the end of January, but before she left, we had really apportioned many of her duties among the other clerks. So we didn't need a chief deputy clerk because those duties were all assumed by other members of the clerk's office. So what we did with Sarah would make her like a utility person. She works in the clerk's office. She works in the probation department. So she's mostly right now in probation, but the goal is to have her assist with the administration of the new docket we haven't rolled out yet. We want to do a special docket on domestic violence, and we think she's the perfect person to help monitor that and help organize that and help get that rolling. So we're requesting a new title. It would be a pay decrease from, she was at a pay grade 15 in her role as chief deputy clerk. I've requested the pay grade of 11 with five years of experience. That's what she holds.
Mr. Richardson, this actually goes to your committee for employee relations. I'm not sure it needs to go to committee with the judge's recommendation and a pay cut in the position, but it's your call whether you're comfortable with this tonight, you'd like to refer it.
I would feel comfortable passing it personally if no, but no other members of council disagree.
Also, I also support passing it, but I do have a couple of quick questions for the judge. Judge, am I understanding this correctly, that this is not an additional position? This is just replacing the previous position, realigning it a bit?
It's a new position, not a new employee.
So will there be two positions then, and the other one just not filled at this point in time?
I guess, yeah. If we just, we could abolish the chief deputy position altogether, it won't be filled.
And you support having that position abolished or eliminated, that you don't need both?
We don't, we certainly don't need both.
Okay. I guess where Mary and others are going, Judge, is how would this affect the budget?
Well, we would be decreasing Sarah's pay by almost $5 an hour. So it would be, it would be a decrease in the budget.
You don't hear that often.
Well, like, if, since I've got you all here, I'll tell you, when Nita resigned, we brought up Jana to be our new clerk, and her pay is less than Nita's. And Kathy Hunter just retired at the end of February, and she was on a high, high tier of, as a clerk, and we have not replaced her, and we don't need to replace her. So I think we're doing pretty well in that regard.
Mrs. Brining, would it be possible and correct for City Council to vote to amend this legislation and add in the, the removal of the original post and then pass it as amended legislation?
Sure. Yep, that's, that's definitely an option. So if we can just amend the title and introduce it and pass it like that, I can make that amendment tomorrow.
Amending the title would be to delete?
To, yep, to delete the chief deputy clerk job title. Is that the right job title, Judge?
That's correct.
Okay.
Delete the chief deputy?
Clerk.
Or position?
Yep.
We put that right at the end just before and declaring an emergency then.
Yep.
Mr. Richardson, are you comfortable with that?
Sure, that sounds good to me.
So I think we need two different motions. First, to amend Ordinance 28 and take a vote on that, and then another motion to approve it.
Sorry, go ahead, Doug.
Before we do that, Judge, I'm sorry, I didn't, the employee that is taking this job, is she, she's amenable to this pay cut?
She understands it's coming. She's not excited about it. She, she was pretty stoic about it. I mean, it's a pay decrease.
Yeah, is there, is there a performance issue?
No, not at all. It's, it's just simply responsibilities being realigned.
So what's, what's her take-home impact on a regular basis?
Oh, I don't know.
Five bucks an hour would be just over 10 grand a year.
Thanks, Mark.
What warrants that reduction in her compensation?
Um.
I'm sorry to sound like a Democrat, Mike.
I, I can step in and answer that if, if you want, Judge.
Okay, I'd be, I'm interested.
The, the situation, and the judge and I have been talking back and forth on this, the situation is that the work that she's doing in probation, where she's spending most of her time, is similar work to three or four other employees in that department that make significantly less, and it was causing a problem that she was making a lot more. So we tried, she's still making one grade higher than, than those other employees in that department, but to have four grades higher was too big of a, too big of a difference when she was doing the same work the majority of her time.
How did that happen? Was this a seniority thing?
There was an opening in the probation department at the same time that her job was being eliminated, so that I, the judge made the decision to move her into that opening in the probation department.
Okay. You know, I'm, I'm a small business owner, and I know these are, you know, reducing people's compensation. It sometimes causes other issues with the employee. But Judge, I will defer to you entirely on this, but I would.
And personnel has made the recommendation to lower her pay in those conversations back and forth with the judge. For the reason I talked of, that the other, we didn't feel it was fair and correct for the other employees in that department to make $6 an hour less doing the same thing.
Okay. I would just observe that that might have been, that, there might have been an opportunity to do that, but then we filled the position. But I understand where we're at. You're comfortable, this gives us, puts us in a good place, and, and our employee morale will be, will not be adversely affected.
Okay, I hope not. She's a really good worker. We've talked about this. I think, I think she'll be fine.
Okay.
I hope she'll be fine.
I know I get grumpy when I don't make as much money. That's all I know. Okay, thank you.
So I will make a motion to amend Ordinance Number 28 to add eliminating the chief deputy clerk position from the Slovenia municipal court system. Is that correct?
Second.
Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded to amend proposed Ordinance 28, 2021 by adding a deletion by, to delete the chief deputy clerk position. All in favor of that amendment indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Now, Mr. Richardson, we need a motion to approve Ordinance 28, 2021 as amended.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would now like to introduce ordinance, amended ordinance number 28-2021, and I will read by title only. "Revising the administrative, departmental, and divisional organization of the city and the codified ordinances thereof by amending Slovenia Codified Ordinances, Section 139.02A. Content and coverage of the compensation plan to add a job title for probation liaison clerk/special docket officer while deleting the chief deputy clerk position, waiving the second and third readings and declaring an emergency, and I will move for passage as an emergency measure."
Second. It has been moved and seconded for passage of Ordinance 28, 2021 as amended as an emergency measure. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and Ordinance 28, 2001 is enacted as an emergency measure. Thank you all. Judge, thank you for joining us. You are, of course, welcome to stay with us for the rest of the meeting, but in no way obligated to do so.
Okay, thank you very much, everybody. I appreciate your support. Can't tell you how much it means to us. I'll let you, I'll, I'm gonna sign off right now, though.
Judge, thank, thank you for being here, Judge. We appreciate it.
Thank you for your work. Thank you for your work, folks.
With that, let's go back to our agenda. We're up to Agenda Item 6, which is Haroon Park Stream Restoration Project Update. Mr. Aller, please introduce the subject and your speaker for tonight.
Yes, just to remind council, this is a project that we approved some time ago, and we're able, we're successful in obtaining a grant for the majority of the project. It's roughly a $241,000 project, and the city's responsibility is only about $24,000 of that. So about 90% of this project is being covered via grant. So we've made some modifications to the project, and our consultant, and if you remember, this was a design-build project. We don't do those very often, but our consultant has the plans ready to move forward, and the construction will actually begin on this project next week. I hope I'm not stealing too much of your show, Deanna, but it will be starting soon. So I'm gonna turn it over to Deanna Boback. She's with our. I'm gonna turn it over to, uh, Deanna Boback. Uh, she's with our consultant, Civil and Environmental Consultants, and, uh, she'll kind of lay out the, uh, presentation on what the project's gonna be.
Great, thank you, Kevin. Um, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here. I have I have a presentation. Um, Kevin, I'm getting a message that says host disabled participant screen sharing.
Chuck, we need you to allow our speaker to have to share her screen.
Yep, she should be also. Should be also.
Awesome, thanks. Go ahead and get my PowerPoint up here. And hopefully you can see the title screen there.
We can, yes.
Awesome, thank you. Well, thank you again for having me, um, come and speak with you this evening. Um, I, I want to send a special thanks out to Kevin. Um, he's really been kind of a visionary for this project when we first started talking about it several years ago. Um, and, and is, you know, really good to work with, with him and Joe Shaw in terms of, uh, you know, moving forward, um, and creating good things within the city of Slovenia, especially to to align with some of your other initiatives right now with your focus on downtown. So just a brief background and timeline for you. Um, we started talking about this project in around 2018. Um, through some funding that we knew that was going to be coming down from the Ohio Lake Erie Commission. Uh, so there are these things called nine-element plans, and they're basically watershed plans that have specific water quality improvement projects that have been put into them. And so this particular project became a part of that plan, um, as it was developed and then updated. And so as projects become eligible for, once they become a part of these plans, they be, then become eligible for funding. And so for this particular funding mechanism, uh, the state of Ohio keeps a list of all of the projects that are within these plans, and if there are special carve-outs of money, they will go through the lists of projects and, and kind of pick and choose which ones align with how much money they have available and which, what initiatives they are trying to move forward. And so that's really kind of, um, how this particular project came to be funded. So in 2019, um, the city of Slovenia received a grant for $216,000 from the Ohio Lake Erie Commission. Um, this particular grant was looking at projects that help reduce sediments and nutrients that help make progress towards the 40% reduction in phosphorus to Lake Erie um, as a means of, uh, trying to reduce the occurrence of harmful algal blooms out to the lake. And so, um, in 2020, um, you know, we, we bid on the project with our design-build partner, Hepico. And so we've gone through, um, with a slight delay from COVID, we've gone through and, um, we have all of our engineering and, and design plans set. Permitting has already been approved, um, both from the state, um, as well as the US Army Corps of Engineers. And so we're ready to start construction here, um, in the coming weeks. So if you recall, the last time that you saw this project, when it was first talked about, the original project had, it was a two, a two-part project. There was an in-stream component, and I'm not sure if you're able to see my pointer on the screen, but I'm, I'm pointing to these V-shaped things here up in Ten Mile Creek. Um, so there was an in-stream component that would deal with replanting the riparian corridor along the stream, which is what that green um, rectangle is. And then also putting some in-stream structures to lessen the stress on the banks. In addition to that, there was an urban infrastructure component to it as well. Um, to design a rain garden to go in the middle of the parking lot in Haroun Park. As we went through and started to, um, assess the sites, uh, look at existing conditions, we discovered a couple of things that, uh, would make moving forward with this particular conceptual design uh, pretty difficult and potentially caught more costly than what the grant had, um, originally funded. Um, so we did discover within the stream itself, the presence of bedrock. Um, and the amount of bedrock and the type of bedrock that was there really was challenging in terms of the installation of these structures, so we could have potentially tried to install structures here, but we could have had, uh, difficulties in doing so that would um, extend the project timeline, uh, create the need for more drilling. Um, and so we really didn't want to go that route with all of the, the unknowns that were there. Um, given that this is grant funding, we really wanted to be cognizant how much money was available and make sure that we were moving forward in a way that was both feasible, um, improved water quality, and, um, stayed within the set budget that we had. In addition to that, we also had, um, some concerns uh, with irrigation infrastructure that was discovered in this rain garden, in this area slated for the rain garden. And so we started talking to Ohio EPA and Ohio Lake Erie Commission, and, um, with some of the uncertainties with the bedrock and the infrastructure that's already there, um, we came up with an alternative plan, uh, that we think Ohio EPA is pretty happy with. Um, Ohio Lake Erie Commission's pretty happy with. Uh, Kevin, I, Kevin's pretty happy with it, so, um, this is the alternative plan that we came up with. Um, we will have an upstream component still, but we've taken out that urban green, um, infrastructure, that rain garden, so we're no longer dealing with the irrigation structure here. We are still going to take this area here and replant the riparian quarter, corridor as we had originally suggested. In addition to that, we will be placing some pervious pavers in this area um, to draw attention to the stream bank, to engage the public and bring them in. We've also, um, we looked within, uh, the length of Haroun Park to identify potentially a different area to do some in-stream restoration. And we identified an area just upstream from the pedestrian bridge that, uh, connects the new SOMO development to the park. And so we'll talk a little bit about both of those components. So the upstream component, this is current conditions, um, within Haroun Park, right up near. For point of reference, this is the root building. And so we've got this exposed area here, this denuded, denuded area. And so what happens when the floodwaters rise, they scour across this denuded area, picking up sediments, picking up nutrients and other urban pollutants that are also attached to those sediments and carrying them downstream. So what we are proposing through our design drawing here is the green here is replanting this riparian corridor. So we know across the, the stream here, we've got a bank that's full of willows, and we know that sometimes, um, we've heard that these willows are sometimes problematic from a maintenance perspective. Um, they grow, they, they have a lot of vertical growth, and so sometimes that goes over this nice boardwalk here, and so maintenance of those is an issue. So while we will be, um, planting this riparian area, it's going to be done at a density, um, at, at a much lower density than what we see on the other side. There, we are focused on planting with native plants, um, woody vegetation that will hold the stream bank in place, um, and a lot of native grasses in here as well. So we're not going to see um, this, this kind of overgrowth that you would see from the live stakes from the willows on the other side. This pervious paver, um, pathway here, uh, provides, uh, so, not only support for, um, for this area instability, but it allows a maintenance access for the city, um, to be able to access the streams so that they can provide maintenance on the other banks as well. Um, we also look at this pervious paver pathway. Um, it's, it's again, bringing people in, engaging them with the stream, offering up another perspective. Um, so we've got this nice perspective here from the boardwalk. You'll also be able to engage with the stream, um, from this other bank here. Our downstream component, so these are existing conditions today. Um, what we see here is that the stream itself is actually over wide. Um, and because it's over wide, when we get uh, flow and heavy flow flooding downstream, um, what will happen is, uh, because it's over wide, the sediment that is being carried within the stream tends to drop out, and it tends to to culminate here in the middle of the stream. As that happens, the water flow then diverts around that middle of the stream where we start to see buildup of sediment. By doing so, um, it causes the water flow to create excessive shear, shear stress to our stream banks along the sides. And we see what we see in that, um, in the right-hand picture here, where we've got scoured banks. Um, essentially, what will happen is this will, this will move laterally back. You'll have trees that fall in, and so that's really, we're trying to, um, stabilize the stream banks here so that we don't get that lateral recession. Now, because of the area of this, this is also a very good area to, to do stream bank stabilization in that you have, um, the pathway that runs through Haroun Park just to the left. And so by stabilizing the banks here and decreasing that lateral recession towards that, um, towards that pathway, you're helping save kind of the land for that pathway. So it doesn't eventually over time fall into the creek. So the plan for this area, again, to orient yourself, at the downstream section is the pedestrian br- bridge that goes over to the SOMO development. We have a couple of different components. So we have these in-stream structures here. Those are called J-hooks, and those essentially are boulders that are put within the stream. As the stream starts to flow over those boulders, so you'll see they form kind of a J here. As the stream flows over those boulders, the water flow is directed towards the middle of the stream as opposed to along the sides. So you're, you're reducing some of that shear stress along the sides of the bank. In addition, you'll see kind of these little X-type structures. That's called tow wood. And so what tow wood is down here, um, in, in this bottom picture, tow wood is using natural materials such as, um, larger trees, and it's inserting those into the bank, top dressing them with some matting and some topsoil as well as live plants and creating, creating, uh, and building out this bank with using natural structures as opposed to riprap. So what this does is a couple of different things. It provides stability for the bank, but it also, these, this wood that you don't get to really see, the way that it is put in there is it's put in at base flow elevation, so it's really kind of below the length or below the depth of the water. It creates habitat for fish. So we're not only reducing erosion, um, and stress on the stream banks, we're also creating fish habitat. And then we will go ahead and we will rebuild this kind of bubbly-looking structure here. Um, we will rebuild the riffles, and we'll take some of the, the rock material that's already there um, and disperse it out, um, creating a natural riffle within this, within the sequence here. And so that also provides oxygenation for the aquatic species and it creates additional habitat. So in both components, both the upstream and the downstream component, we do anticipate putting signage, um, informational signage about the importance of riparian corridors, the importance of stream restoration to really engage the public. We think that both of these areas are pretty high-visibility areas, especially with the, the new development that's down there. You know, summer's coming. Things are getting, starting to open up a little bit more, um, with COVID, and, and so I, we really anticipate this is going to be a high-visibility area over this next, this next summer and beyond, um, as you engage people with your River Trail. So with that, I would be happy to engage any questions that you might have about the project.
Now, Deanna, I have a quick question for you.
Sure.
Can you give me a sense of how long does that downtown, downstream component last? Like, when you talked about the rifle area where you're doing the build-out using the natural structures? Like, is that something that has to be, um, refurbished, like, every couple of years, or does, what's the longevity of that, those efforts?
Well, ripples are natural structures, so in a healthy streams, we see, um, it's called riffle-run sequence. And so there's already some semblance of a riffle there. Um, but because we are starting to get some of that sedimentation in, in this middle section here, what we will do is we will take out some of that sediment um, and kind of redistribute this. In terms of long-term maintenance, um, there's no hard and fast as, like, every five years you need to go rearrange rocks or anything like that. You can essentially let that riffle go. Um, with, with us stabilizing the stream bank here, um, the, the chances and the reduction of having that sediment kind of form in the middle there, you're going to have that riffle stay there for a fairly long time. Thank you.
Deanna, what's the timeframe of getting this done?
Sure. So we are looking, um, so we've got a couple of different constraints that we're looking at, um, for, there are a couple of trees that are along this area here that need to be removed. Tree removal has to happen before March 31st, um, due to potential bad habitat. And so, uh, we're looking at mobilizing early next week and going, going ahead and getting started. Um, it'll be done in two phases. Uh, at this point, it's looking like the downstream portion will be completed first. So in-stream, and we anticipate that will be done before mid-April, um, so that we are not, um, we are avoiding the need for a waiver, um, to work in-stream beyond the April 15th date. There's, um, there's a species within there that it's recommended to not do in-stream work after that date. Um, so that portion will be done, and then we will move on to the upstream component by the root building. We are aware that there is a in-harbor day event on April 30th, and so we anticipate being in and out before, well, well in advance of that date. Um, with weather delays pending, nothing, nothing huge happens, um, we're looking at a four-to-five week construction timeframe, so, like, we anticipate being finished the week before mid-June.
I have a quick question, circling back to Mary's question about the longevity of this. So in the summer, you see kids down there building dams, moving rocks around. Is that, I mean, kids playing, moving stuff around, will that mess it up, or will that be on the sign, don't move the rocks, or?
I mean, that's definitely a concern, of course. Um, I don't think total are going to move ripples to the point where it will completely destroy what we're trying to do there. But it, that's definitely something that we can put on the informational signage, talking about the need for some of those structures to stay in place. Um, you know, we don't typically think, you know, you just pick up a rock from the stream and, and you go about your merry way, um, but that's definitely something we can include on the signage there.
Perfect, thank you. Deanna, would you just quickly flash back to the upstream component? Just, I'd like to take a quick glance back at that. Can you explain to me again a little bit about the, the brick space? I mean, those, that must be stabilization underneath of some sort?
Sure. Um, so actually, um, the area that you're seeing here, this brown area that's denuded right now, is right in the grain there. So the, the pavers themselves will, will go from the parking lot to the stream. Um, and so they, this whole area right now is currently mowed. And so the pavers themselves provide, uh, access to the stream, um, and so for, on this side, after talking with Kevin and kind of going back and forth and talking about some of the maintenance that they currently perform, they typically have to drive over this area in order to access the stream so they can get equipment in there to cut down the blows on the other side. And so by doing that, if we were to replant this area with native plants and the equipment were to drive over it, it would, it would tear everything up. It would create more erosion. And so to avoid that, we're using a pervious paver system to provide that access for maintenance vehicles.
Thank you, that makes, that makes a lot of sense.
Tonight's informational session here is part of the uh, boundary or the grant requirements that we, we present this information publicly before the work proceeds. So, Deanna, we appreciate you being here tonight.
Yeah, no, sure, no problem. Um, other, there are other components as well to the public information and outreach for this. Um, from, there have been a few changes because of COVID, um, just trying to be cognizant of what we can and can't do. Um, but there will be, uh, a video that we will be putting together documenting the construction aspect of this and pointing different things out. That will be available. Um, I believe Kevin, on, on the city of Slovenia's website. Um, there's also fact sheets that are being, uh, developed for this project for distributing information as well.
We've had a very dry spring so far. We've had a very dry spring so far with low water flows. I hope that continues for the four, five or six weeks you need, because if we get heavy rains, you won't be working in there very much. Water moves very quickly.
That is correct. Yeah. We've, we've definitely seen the, the river during high flow and so we're, we're keeping our fingers crossed for low flow over the next few weeks.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Deanna owns Scuba Gear as well.
All right. I don't believe there's any council action needed tonight, Mr. Aller.
Oh, that's correct, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Um, if there's no further questions from city council, I'd like to thank Deanna for being with us. We appreciate your presentation and good luck getting the work done.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to be here.
All right. Thanks, Deanna. I appreciate it.
Thank you. You all have a good evening.
I would like to move on to agenda item seven. You have in your council package, resolution three, two thousand and twenty-one. This was an ordered resolution to approve the downtown plan that we had our public meeting on, or our public information session a couple of weeks ago. Um, I don't know if there's any comments that city council would like to make prior to this, but this resolution will officially, uh, record council's approval of the new downtown master plan. Mr. Sanford, any, any comments?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to add that, um, Michelle Johnson will be submitting a proposal for the zoning that was discussed at the last council meeting. And I anticipate then having that ready for council at our next meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Frye, I think it falls upon you to read resolution number three, two thousand and twenty-one.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry I was slowing that, but, uh, uh, Mr. Stanford, that's a proposal to assist us with the, um, with the zoning changes that go along with the master plan, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to introduce by title only, resolution number three dash two thousand and twenty-one. Approving the Sylvania Downtown Master Plan. And I make the motion to approve the, the resolution three dash two thousand and twenty-one as an emergency measure.
It has been moved and seconded for passage of resolution number three, two thousand and twenty-one as an emergency measure. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries and resolution number three, two thousand and twenty-one is enacted as an emergency measure. Thank you. Now we have added agenda item seven B. Uh, Ms. Dow, you wanted to talk about the Dora expansion coming soon.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we've had a taste of spring weather and with that comes renewed interest and drive to work on the, uh, Dora expansion. So, um, since we last met, um, I have finalized the survey that was discussed previously and, um, the administration has it and we will be distributing that, um, in two ways. Um, one is we'll be sending out a mailer to the, um, immediate or to downtown area and immediate neighborhoods. And then there's also an online survey option so that we can get sort of as wide of a range of feedback on this as we can. Um, and then simultaneously I do have, I have asked, um, Bill Sanford and the administration to put together a proposal for where the expansion might go, um, based on what we've been hearing from local businesses. And so the hope is by, um, I've asked for the deadline for the survey to be, um, March 28th, so about two weeks away. And that gives us about a week before our next meeting. So the hope is that we can take the feedback from the survey and incorporate it with the recommendations, um, to be able to prepare, um, potential, um, legislation for our next meeting. Um, now Mrs. Brining, or Leslie, sorry, I'm used to calling you Leslie, um, has, um, informed me that there will also be a sort of a delay period that would need to happen. Um, could you, could you quickly talk about that, Leslie?
Um, sure. Thanks, Ms. Al. There, we need to, um, publish the ordinance and I, I believe it's, um, once a week for two consecutive weeks and we also need to have a public hearing. Um, it's kind of the exact same process that we did before. So the delay are just the procedural Ohio revise code requirements. So, um, if we have the proposed legislation in a general sense, um, probably mid, mid-May to early June would be the, um, the timeline by the time we go out and do, um, do the publication and have the public hearing.
Thanks, Leslie. Sure. Thanks. So that is the update for council. Um, do you have any questions for me about that or anything else you guys would like to know? Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, I think we're ready to move on to agenda item eight. Uh, present in council chambers is Michelle Sprott, together with Tiffany Scott to talk to us about a proposal for overhead lighting improvements in the downtown area. Um, Michelle, you've moved into the camera range I see there. That's good. Um, so go right ahead.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for your time this evening. I'm thrilled to be here one last time before I depart later this week. But wanted to talk to you about another opportunity that we have in downtown Sylvania utilizing the lighting cables. So the first photo that we'll show you is just a picture of what downtown Sylvania looks like at Christmas time. So if we can go back to that and reminisce a little, it was truly the talk of the region throughout December and January. I hope you guys enjoyed it as much as I did each time I was downtown. Um, you will notice that the globes hang, there are 10 separate cables that house all of the Christmas globes. Those globes are only up at Christmas time. They'll hang for about two and a half, three months. And then when they come down, they are just barren lines that hang there. Uh, some people have asked, why can't the globes hang all year round? Great question. While I would love to see them all year round, it is something that's truly special for our downtown at the holidays. If you had it hanging all year round, it would lose its luster a little bit. Um, it really makes our downtown the talk of Northwest Ohio throughout the holidays. It gives that amp to the retail and restaurants that are needing that boost in their sales during the holiday season. And then finally, this is a lighting display. The coolest time to see this display, of course, is at night. And it works throughout November, December, January because we have such little daylight. Um, but now that they're down and we just had daylight savings and we've got some barren cables hanging up there, I brought a few options to the mayor a few weeks ago. And if we can go to the next option, this is something that could hang on those barren lines, um, at another time during the year. So these don't require lights. As we head into the time of year where we are most daylight heavy, you don't want a lighting display. It's kind of inapplicable. So these are something that would provide a lot of really just cool ambiance to our street, no lighting needed. So they're balloons. I brought Mayor a ton of examples a few weeks ago and this is what he selected. I personally love this. And, um, so I said, okay, let me get busy doing my homework. So I went back and tried to find something that would work. It is, it was very challenging trying to find an item like this. Of course Bronner's doesn't really have anything like this. Bronner's up in Frankenmuth, of course, is where I purchased all of the Christmas decor from, and they really don't have a lot of options other than Christmas, um, and other festive types of wreaths and garland, definitely not what we're looking for, for other times of the year. So I was able to find a supplier somewhat local. I was pleased to find him. He's in Plymouth, Michigan. Um, if we can go to the next slide. These are not the traditional way of how we would utilize them. You might be familiar with, um, these giant balloons. You'll see them out at, along the sides of the road. Um, there's some in front of King, oh, what's that? Um, senior living facility right across from Kingston. They've got a cluster of those balloons. There it is. Out in front of, um, Kings Point currently, uh, car dealerships typically have these types of balloons out in front of their dealerships, um, just for a pop, something to catch your eye as you're driving by. So these are durable. These are made for the outdoors. They are UV resistant. They have a lifespan of about 12 months, weather dependent, of course, if you just left them out 24/7. Um, they're not that expensive. They're $10 per balloon with an additional cost of about $15 to $20 for the fixtures. So, and you can see they come in a array of colors. They said steer away from a white color. Those tend to yellow. And even though they're UV resistant, red are still going to fade. Neither of those colors did we want to use anyways. So I went online and I ordered one. So, um, I brought it in person. I was walking in tonight with the mayor and asked him if this was the most unique item that's ever been carried into a city council meeting and he agreed. So here is the giant balloon. When I received it, I handed it over to your Parks and Rec crew. They inflated it and they identified a way to make this work for us. Obviously, we're not going to put these on sticks in the ground. They're going to hang from those cables, uh, across Main Street. So they worked up a really awesome system here that will easily clip into the D-rings that are already up on those cables that hold the globes. So easy install, easy takedown. Um, normally when Dan, your bucket truck operator is up there, it is freezing cold and windy, so he has made that process, process as efficient as possible. So this is what it looks like. Um, then finally, Mayor had asked me to get some feedback from the downtown businesses, the Arts Commission, the Downtown Sylvania Association. So I requested it feedback from about 50 different business owners, the fellow organizations in downtown Sylvania. And the final, um, uh, to share tonight is some of the feedback that I received. Um, this is both good and bad. Um, I don't, I don't want to say bad. Good and constructive in the sense that my original plan was to possibly leave these balloons up for anywhere from four to six months. Um, the majority of everyone, as you can see, they're quotes, they absolutely love the idea. The two main areas of feedback was that they would want to cut down the number of colors that we would actually use from the pinks and the yellows and greens and blues to maybe only two colors originally. We don't want to make it too busy, of course, Main Street in the summertime with all the trees in bloom and the banners hanging, um, and the planters. It can tend to get really busy and really cluttered really fast. That's not at all what the vision is. So I agree, we could scale this back to some, maybe two blues, two types of green. And then also Scott Hudson made a great point, similar to why we only have the globes at Christmas time hang for eight to 10 weeks. It's so that way they don't lose their luster and they stay exciting. So we would look to scale these balloons back for four to six possible weeks. Um, we're looking at a summer timeframe, maybe a May through mid-June hanging or maybe a beginning of June through Marathon Classic. That is really to be determined. Um, but I'll open it up right now for other questions. Any questions that you might have? And then I will finally note that this is in great hands. Um, Mayor is the visionary behind, uh, this and selected this. And Tiffany, who is here with me tonight, is fully, um, a part of every one of these discussions with your crew at Parks and Rec, with Bill, with Kevin. Um, so thank you, Kevin, for allowing Pat and his crew to get creative. But, um, as, as far as when they hang and the final colors, that's to be determined by you guys moving forward.
Hey, Michelle, this is Mark. How many, how many balloons are we talking about here potentially?
Great question. So each of those lines, uh, at Christmas time have seven globes on them. We were thinking to originally increase it to 10, possibly even 15 balloons per line. But again, that's negotiable as well. We would just simply have to add a few more hooks up there. They're just, um, carabiner D-rings. They're not costly. And, um, also a very important note, this is all completely funded by the Sylvania Chamber. This is part of the monies, when I was raising money to complete the Christmas portion of this, there was always the intention to purchase other accessories throughout other times of the year. So that way those lines did not stay blank throughout the rest of the year.
So 10 strands, 10 globes on each, times 37, 38 bucks is what I think I'm hearing.
Yep. Yep. And that is well within our budget to be able to do that. Um, once possibly even twice is not that costly. We have the room in that complete the street budget to do that. So if you wanted to do something, um, mid-summer, like I said, maybe around Marathon Classic with some greens and blues up there as we welcome all of the golfers into our community, that's a possibility. You could get creative and put some orange up there, um, at fall and just make it, um, make it exciting and make it the talk of Northwest Ohio multiple times throughout the year.
Michelle, I do have a question, but before I ask, I want to take a quick moment to say thank you to you for the exceptional leadership that you've brought to the chamber and the huge benefit that you've brought to our community under your leadership. We're so grateful to have had you at the helm for as long as you were. We're sad to see you go. No, let me say I speak for myself. I'm sad to see you go. Um, but certainly Helsdale is very fortunate to get you in their ballpark. And thank you for all you've done to improve our community in so many exciting ways. There are big shoes to be filled there. I'm sure Tiffany will be up to the task in her interim capacity, but we're grateful for all you've done. I do have a question though.
I, I would, I would definitely echo those comments, Mary. You said it very well.
Yeah. Michelle, um, how much, what, tell me about the size of the balloons compared to the size of the balls of the light. Are they a similar size?
Yes. So Chuck, if you, can you go back to the first one with the globes, please? You'll see there are four different sizes of the globes. There's a, actually, there's one, two, three, four. Yes, four different sizes of the globes. This is going to be in between the size of the second and third largest globe in diameter. Um, so right at the top of your screen, there's a couple there on the very right far side. They're going to be about that size. These will all be the same size, whereas the Christmas globes, um, vary in, in sizes.
Okay.
And, and actually they could be varying sizes. I take that back. It depends on how high or how much the, um, Parks and Rec crew inflates them. So if you wanted to see them at varying sizes, I'm, I'm, I suppose that's a possibility. The, the rendering, the picture that we took our idea from, they're all the same size.
Thank you.
Michelle, Mary, thank you.
So Michelle, first I'd like to thank you as well. I mean, your Christmas decorations, the lights were phenomenal. I mean, they really did give me goosebumps every time I went down there. And I would echo what Mary said, we're so sad to see you go. So my question is, so for a while we were hanging banners for like Lords, I think, has a graduation banner. So how are the banners going to work with the balloons?
Good question. Um, that is a play it by ear as they go. Um, one thing that we learned, Kevin, was that the original banners that we were hanging, that Lords purchased and hung, the Marathon Classic one that the Chamber purchased and hung and the Fall Festival, those are never hung, and the Fall Festival, those are never going to work up there again. They were a style of vinyl banner that when the wind, they just did not work well with the wind. Even if you put the slits in them, they were just this major wind sail and they pulled and pulled so much tension on the one hook that is connected to the Chandler Building. And some extensive work had to be redone on repairing the joint on the Chandler Building. So with that being said, there was a Sylvania Schools Congratulations Graduates banner that hung last spring. It was a mesh banner that is the only style of large banner that can hang up there again so the wind can appropriately get through it and not be such a burden and a weight pulling on those brackets. I haven't spoken with Lords, but those banners to, for all of us to purchase brand new ones when we just already purchased the other ones is going to be pretty pricey. They're about $2,500 apiece. I don't know if Lords intends to do that again for the spring, the fall. I know the Chamber this year does not have it in our budget to replace the Marathon Classic. So I would say that's just a, to be determined, work with whichever high level entity wants to put a banner up there.
So one more, one more.
Question.
No, it did answer my question. I love the idea of a spectacle, like a temporary art exhibit, because it definitely brings people downtown. And whether they like it or not, they came to see it. It sounds like the beginning of a fantastic idea, but maybe that there's still some details to be worked out. And I really, like, I would feel like the most comfortable if, like, for the DSA board to weigh in since it, I mean, it is their front yard and I feel like they're the main stakeholder downtown.
Right.
You're leaving next week. So no, I'm not worried that you're leaving next week, but I would feel more comfortable for the DSA board to weigh in and just work out all the small little details and see how they feel about it.
Absolutely, and thank you for that. They did, Scott Hudson is on the DSA board, as well as Mark Frye and myself. And Dani Fuller did provide a statement. It was very similar to Scott's. That's why I did not copy and paste it and put it on there. She too just wanted to see maybe less colors and a shorter timeframe, just for more impact. And so that way it wouldn't get boring, I guess you could say.
Michelle, I want to say I love your creativity. I love that you're willing to consider different ideas. And I think it could be a really fun addition to downtown. I think I'm of a somewhat similar idea of I, I'd love to see them, but I think I want to see them under the guise of it's maybe a slightly, it's more like a test phase, right? A trial. Let's see how, see how they do react in the weather when they're hanging up in the air and how the wind affects them and whether it starts to block something with the signs. I mean, they have a pretty low material cost, which makes it easier for them to be something that's tried. I'm wondering, and maybe Kevin can answer this or Mr. Aller, whether, what kind of investment on the city end for the actual putting up of the, these balloons would be? If the material costs, though, I'm wondering what the labor would be?
We, I don't know, I don't, I don't know for sure how, what our time will be in putting these up and down because we've never done it before. I can tell you what the Christmas clubs, we typically have about two or three days on those. Some of that is prep time, getting everything ready to go up and then obviously the actual installation. So I would anticipate, I would anticipate something along those lines. It's kind of a mix. Sometimes the, I'll have the crews come in before, you know, early in the, in the day before there's any traffic whatsoever down there. That way they've got a free obstruction place to work. Other times they'll actually do it through the day. So, you know, it's, I would have to, I'd have to check and see how many bodies we do have. Dan is typically the one that's up in the truck. And then you'll typically have two guys on the ground with them at that, at that time. So, but that's what we're looking at.
One note, too, if I may, Lindsay, there's no electricity. There's no running cables. There's no lighting with the balloons, like the globes. So I know that does add some time because they're literally plugging from globe to the next globe to the next globe and on down. These are just, you hook it and you're done. So maybe the first time because they're, they're working out the kinks, but after that it should be pretty seamless.
Yeah, it'd be tough to say, let's, let's have someone spend three days putting up the balloons to have it be up for, you know, one week or maybe two weeks to then have someone spend another three days. It seems proportionally maybe a little off. So like, I think I may be leaning towards like, what if we had sort of a trial month and see what the wear and tear is on them? And maybe having it overlap with, I mean, Maple and Maine, an arts festival, seems like a pretty natural fit to something like this. But I think it's a really fun idea and I'm glad that we're kind of thinking through what, what the possibilities are within the downtown. So thank you.
I just want to jump in real quick and just thank Michelle for coming in tonight. And this was a chance Kevin and the mayor had seen this. We wanted to make sure that you had an idea what this looked like. And, and I think in the next couple of weeks, we'll be able to spend some time to take the input we hear tonight with the other input we've got from other people and with the DSA and come back to you with more of a plan as to how this is all going to work here. So again, Michelle, thanks for coming in tonight. And we want you to hold on here just one second before you leave and.
It's in good hands moving forward at the helm of, of Mayor and Bill and Kevin and of course Tiffany, so.
Mayor Stow's now in the room and he has something here to say to Michelle.
But let's stay on this first. I would propose that City Council think about this for the next few weeks and we can talk about it again on April 5th and give some direction as to how many and what colors of balls we might want to purchase after we have more input from you and from other downtown people. And then I like Lindsay's idea of trying to get this up for the Maple in May. It'll be a test. It isn't like when we're doing the globes where it's a big investment. We can put them up there, see how they look, see if people like them, have them up there for a few weeks or a month and then take them down again and perhaps make it a change the next time around. We could put them back up for the marathon or we might not. But I don't think we need to decide tonight. We can come back in three weeks and give us some direction as to what you would like to do. So thank you for that. I am in City Council chambers tonight specifically so I could present Michelle with a proclamation. I've been meeting across the hall in the police conference room and I'll go back there when I'm done, but I wanted to do this in person. I have a proclamation. And Michelle, I'm going to read it to you here. You can read with me. Proclamation from the Office of the Mayor. Whereas Michelle Spratt was hired in May 2016 to lead the Sylvania Area Chamber of Commerce. And whereas Michelle and her staff began administering the Fall Festival at the request of Mayor Craig Stow and under his, under her leadership, it has become an even larger two-day community event. And whereas additional events like Pizza Palooza and the Business Expo have expanded as well and bring thousands to Sylvania every year. And whereas membership in the Chamber has grown under Michelle's leadership to over 500 members today, she has also been involved in Sylvania community groups like Sylvania Rotary Club, the DSA, and Sylvania Area Community Improvement Corporation, and helped raise over $100,000 to display holiday lights in downtown Sylvania. Therefore, I, Craig A. Stow, Mayor, do here pride proclaim today, Monday, March 15th, 2021, as Michelle Spratt Day in the City of Sylvania and thank her for her dedicated service to the Sylvania community. Here, here.
Yay, Michelle.
Well deserved.
Hey, can I overtake a picture? I'm going to take my ass off for the picture. Okay, if I stand with you?
Come on, Bill, get her a tissue.
I can't get back to you now.
I mean, um. Mayor, do you mind if we step up a few?
Please do. We're going to have to step up just a little bit. It's too tight back there. That's the camera. Council, I did not know this was coming, so they gave your thanks earlier. This is from, from all of us here in the City of Sylvania.
I too did not know this was coming. Very few people are able to ever pull off a surprise and you guys did it really good tonight. Thank you very much. I don't want to leave Sylvania. It's not my desire to leave, but there is a new opportunity that is calling for my family and I, and really excited about this. I never in a million years would have believed that I would have gotten the position at the Chamber five short years ago. I'm completely undeserving of all of this, but this is so appreciated. It has been my privilege every day, even, even some of the yucky stuff, which is very few and far between. I've enjoyed every moment of my work here in Sylvania and just thank you for allowing me to be creative and just thank you for your support. It has been my utmost pleasure and privilege working with you. The Vice President of Hillsdale College is already, has a meeting for me to meet the Mayor of Hillsdale so we can plan a downtown Hillsdale streetscape. I might have just a little bit of experience in how to do so. So thank you again. I won't take up any more of your time this evening. Thank you, guys.
Michelle, we're so happy that you've been here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, of course.
All right, ladies, you're all welcome to join us for us to eat, but I'm going to go back. And you're welcome to go.
Mayor's on his way back, so he'll be right with us. All right. I think we're ready to move on with our agenda at this time. We are up to Agenda Item Nine, which is the Large Diameter Sanitary Sewer Lining Project. Mr. Aller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On February 12th, we received five bids for the project. The low bid was submitted by Visu Sewer of Ohio and their bid was $1,092,743.50. Our engineer's estimate on that was just over $1.7 million, so considerably less than the engineer's estimate. We had not, we haven't done a whole lot of work like this and had not worked with Visu Sewer. So we did a pretty extensive research on, with the references and found some other projects that they had worked on and contacted those people and got nothing but positive responses from them. So they're a very strong contractor. Much of their work is done in the Wisconsin and Minnesota area, but they are, have done some other work in Ohio as well. So this project is funded. We do have a 49% grant for the project. So we'll be receiving about $535,444 in the form of a grant, which would leave the remainder of $557,299.18 as the city's responsibility. We do have the loan application in that Council approved at our last meeting, or actually two meetings before. And we await word on that. DOWDA meets on March 25th, but I don't really have any concerns with that. So I will let Council know that we're actually working because we did get such a good bid on this. We, I have already reached out to OPWC to look into a change of scope, to be able to do a couple more sections of sanitary sewer with this project. That way we can keep that, those grant funds and still stay within the OWDA loan amount that's already been approved. We're just waiting on those pricing. I may be coming back to you at the next meeting to see if you agree with doing that as well before we move forward. So, but at this time, I do recommend awarding the contract to Visu Sewer of Ohio in the amount of $1,092,743.50. And those funds are budgeted in our sewer account, the 702 account.
Kevin, this is a challenging project. Why don't you give us an idea as to the schedule for the project and what some of the big issues will be as we move forward?
Yeah, they'll be, with this project, you know, as they line the sewer, all of the flow that's, that's in the sewer at that time obviously has to be stopped and pumped around. It's called bypass pumping. So you bypass the section of sewer that you're actually lining. That's really a large piece of this, of this project. And it's really, Visu Sewer put a lot of time in, into how they can best do that bypass pumping. And they believe, if you look at the bid tab, they had a pretty good edge in that bypass pumping categories. And they've done it, they've set it up to where they, they will minimize their setups. They're going to, they actually bring in just longer sections of pipe and set up once and bypass for longer sections where they believe that some of the other companies were looking at just doing it segment by segment. That's a lot of setup and tear down time. And so they, they think that's where they have an advantage. This is going to be pretty visible. You will, you will see they're going to be in the area of Sylvania and McCord. That's where a lot of the sewers is being done, so that's going to have some impact to traffic. And then as well, we will be shutting down Central Avenue at McCord Road for a four-day period. And it's all because of this bypass pumping. You lay that pipe on the ground and then everybody obviously has, it's 12-inch pipe so you can't drive over it. And so we have to set up maintenance of traffic where some intersections, the left turn will be permitted and things of that nature. So it's, it's going to be a very visible project and it's going to be something, but once they're done, they're gone. There's no, you know, there's no excavation or anything of that nature. So it's very clean.
Is this a project that the Chairman of Utilities Committee should go down and inspect personally?
You're a funny guy. I was just thinking, Mayor, the, your, the schedule on this, on the agenda, you went from the heights of Sylvania to the sewer. I just wanted to make sure you're aware of that. Mr. Aller, so to the president, or to the mayor's question regarding the timeline, do we know possibly when this four-day shutdown might be?
We're still working through that. And it's, the, the primary determinant of that is the Door Street Interchange, the ODOT project that is just to our south. ODOT has requested that we, not requested, they have informed us that we will not close Central Avenue until that Door Street Interchange is open. So initially that was going to be, I believe, the end of July, excuse me, the end of June. But we are told that that project is about 30 days ahead of schedule right now. So that being the case, we're, we're working with our contractor a lot on when they, they can and can't come in. Because another factor is we don't want to be doing it while the Solheim Cup is, is going on.
That's where I was going.
Yeah, yeah. So we're, the interchange being open and the Solheim Cup itself, those are two things that we have to make sure we avoid.
Okay, thank you for the update.
Yep.
All right, we do have ordinance 25, 2021 prepared. Mr. McCann? Mr. McCann, if you're ready to read that?
Yes, I am, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. I would like to introduce by title only, Ordinance 25-2021, accepting the bid of Visu Sewer of Ohio, LLC, and awarding the contract for the Large Diameter Sanitary Sewer Lining Project to same, authorizing the expenditure for the improvements in the amount of $1,092,743.50, appropriating funds therefore. I move passage of Ordinance 25-2021 as an emergency measure.
Second. Has been moved and seconded for passage of Ordinance 25-2021 as an emergency measure. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries, and Ordinance 25-2021 is enacted as an emergency measure. Thank you for your efforts on this one, Kevin. We want to make sure that we avoid the week of the Marathon Classic as well, if we can. All right, moving on to Agenda Item 10. If you recall, we needed to rebid the bridge over the north branch of Ten Mile Creek on Monroe Street. Mr. Aller, your report on that rebid?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we did hold a rebid, and we received four bids on March, March 5th. The lowest bid on that was Vernon Nagel out of Napoleon, Ohio, with a bid of $249,375.60. That was about almost 13% under the revised engineer's estimate, and we have done some other work with Vernon Nagel. It's been quite a while. Back in 2013, they did the Erie Street Bridge over Shriver Ditch Project. It went very well, very smooth. Vernon Nagel is a, a longtime Northwest Ohio company and, and had, are known for good work. So it's recommendation, our recommendation that we move forward with awarding a contract to Vernon Nagel in the amount of $249,375.60, and those funds were, we do have those funds in the capital improvements account. We will pay attention as we go, you know, through the year here and see if we make up the difference. This project does, did cost us more than we were initially planning, but we'll keep an eye on those capital improvement funds.
This project also includes temporary enclosure of a main thoroughfare, this time Monroe Street, I believe, early in June. Mr. Aller?
Yes, I'm the bearer of good news on traffic in the Slovenia area tonight. It does include a two-week closure, a complete closure of Monroe Street, and then about another four weeks of one lane in each direction. The, just the, the type of construction that this is just, just doesn't lend itself to partial width or anything like that, and, and so it's, the bridge is over 60 years old, it's never had any work to it. This is really the first time that we've had to do anything to it, and unfortunately, it will be a little disruptive. We will be, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
You're still thinking through your detours for those, least the two weeks, and a lot of people automatically, once they know about a road closure, they detour themselves.
Yeah.
We need to have a formal detours around it, and traffic already backs up there, though I can tell you, traffic forms one lane heading west in the evening rush hour because the only, there's only one through lane at Main Street.
Yeah.
In the morning, they use both lanes, but people tend to gravitate to the curb lane so they can get on US 23.
Yeah.
Might help those periods.
Yep. We have done a presentation to the DSA already to give them advance notice. We will be doing the presentation to the CIC, and then we'll also have the message boards up probably about two weeks in advance of the project and letting people know that it's gonna be closed during that timeframe, so.
Any questions, members of council?
I do. Again, the, the timing on that works around the marathon.
Yeah, the one lane may be into the marathon, the closure definitely won't be, the closure is gonna be the first two weeks of June, but the one lane is gonna be a timing issue. We're hoping that we'll be done and out of there, but that, it's, that could be, that could still be in place.
And then the follow-up is, will we be looking at light timing changes?
Yeah, the, the first day and into the second day, we'll be paying attention to what the traffic actually is, because to be able to make a, in advance, to be able to make a guess as to how traffic is gonna react, we, we won't know. But we'll be up at the intersections and make the adjustments kind of on the fly type thing, and pay attention to how that reacts. You never know if, you know, 100 vehicles are gonna take, from the west, you know, if 100 vehicles are gonna take Centennial Road, or if 1,000 vehicles will take Centennial Road, so, but we'll be up at the, at those intersections paying attention.
Thank you.
And just to remind City Council, the water main crossover on, from the north side to the south side of Monroe Street to serve the solo improvement is happening in the next two weeks. All right. There's no further questions. We have Ordinance 26-2021 to award this contract. This is Westfall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce by title only, Ordinance Number 26-2021, accepting the bid of Vernon Nagel, Inc., and awarding the contract for the Luke Monroe 0127 Bridge Rehabilitation Project to same, authorizing the expenditure for the, for the improvements in the amount of $249,375.60, appropriating funds therefore, and I move adoption of Ordinance 26-2021 as an emergency measure.
I think I heard a second.
Yes.
It has been moved and seconded for passage of Ordinance 26-2021 as an emergency measure. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, and Ordinance 26-2021 is enacted as an emergency measure. Mr. Aller, it's gonna be a busy summer.
Yes, it is.
Like to move on to Agenda Item 11. This has to do with our solid waste services. We've had a contract in place for many years with Republic Services, and Mr. Aller has some updates he would like to make at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our current program is, I'm sure you're all, all aware at your homes, is a program where there's a three-container limit on what homeowners can put out. They're, they are able to put out additional material, but that comes at a cost with bag tags or extra bags. And then our recycling side, we have the 95-gallon toter that we use that are provided by Republic Services. We are taking a look at, we think that it's beneficial with the increase in the automated collection systems, that it would be beneficial for us to go to the 95-gallon containers on both the solid waste, or excuse me, the refuse size, side and the recycling side. So each home would have two 95-gallon containers, one would be for garbage, the other would be for recycling. All of the collections would be done via the automatic loading trucks, and we wouldn't have, you know, garbage bags or cans or mixture or anything of that setting out. Making that change requires quite a few language changes to our existing code. Our code is set up for the three-container limit program. I have modified the code to make the changes that I've spoken about, but I've also done, taken the lead from what we did, did most recently in the water and sewer codes, and when we went through those codes, we, we kept the code, appropriate language in the code, but we removed a lot of the, like, rules and regulations information, put them into rules and regulations, and rather than being in the code. And what that enables us to do, and enables council to say, we are gonna have a refuse and a recycling program, but how that gets accomplished is kind of left to administration and, and the vendor to get that done. Ultimately, council still has the final say on these matters because I can't enter into a different collection program with Republic or any other contractor without council's approval of that service contract. So, but it, it enables the administration, whether it's me or somebody else, to, to be able to negotiate who knows what the next method of garbage collection is gonna be coming down the road, and rather than having to redo the code again, it just indicates that we're gonna provide the program, and the contracts for any type of collection will be brought to, brought back to council for approval. Along with these changes, we're, we would recommend that we, rather than utilize the container, the vendor's containers, we would recommend that we purchase approximately 12,000 toters. We have almost 5,900 homes that we service in the city of Slovenia. So it'd be about 6,000 refuse containers and 6,000 recycling containers, and that we purchase those containers and that they be under our ownership and our maintenance and our control. What that enables us to do then is it enables the city to, if they are happy with their current supplier, they can stick with them and renew a contract. If they're not, they can go out with another, they can go out and attempt to get other bids, but they're not beholden. Company A, if they're already in town and they have those toters in town, they have an advantage because they, they, anybody that comes in is gonna have to make that investment to come into town and handle that business. If we have the toters, we can contract with contractor A, B, or C, if we can negotiate an acceptable contract with them. That will require an estimated cost of about $660,000 from the capital fund, and then that would be, that would become part of our annual expenses over the course of about 10 years. That way, we're not hitting the homeowners all at once with that. We would just amortize that if you would. I think, I think both of these items, the change in service and how we're changing in the toter ownership, is, you know, obviously, that's not a decision that we're gonna make in, in one night here on the proposal, and, you know, I'd be happy to discuss it further, either with committee, the whole, or we're recommending Utilities and Environment Committee because of the subject matter. But I do want council to know that we are still talking, our contract currently expires August 31st of this year. I am still in conversation with our current provider, Republic Services, and they are going to be providing me with a proposal to extend the contract. We have the ability to extend for another five years, but these types of changes are what we're discussing in those discussions with Republic. So it may not be a situation where we do go out for bid, but at this stage, that's what I'm anticipating.
You have in your council packets the proposed Ordinance 27-2021 to update our solid waste recycling ordinances. However, the administration recommends that you refer this to the Utilities and Environmental Committee and that they meet in the next three weeks with Mr. Aller to get some more insight as to what's going on and what the possibilities are. Mr. McCann, so we're recommending it be referred to you.
Before I make that recommendation, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Aller, can I, can I ask that you, did you outline it all, where, what changes were made to the, our ordinance?
I'm working on that, and I will have something like that for the committee.
Great.
Yep.
And I, I move that we refer this to the Utilities and Environment Committee for further discussion and consideration.
Second. Been moved and seconded to refer solid waste services to the Utilities and Environmental Committee. All in favor of that indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Brian, you wanna try and set a meeting?
Yes. I, I assume this would be before the next council meeting. Is that true?
I would prefer that, yes.
Yeah.
All right, fellow members. Katie Markpatrick, who came to mind earlier and later. I'm pretty open, the time between now and the next meeting. Mornings in general, I would say, work better for me, except for Tuesday mornings, but I am flexible.
My thought would be to make this a late afternoon or early evening meeting, only because this is gonna, this is gonna burn some serious time.
Yeah.
There's a lot of questions at that, and I'm not talking about the ordinance change hour and all that jazz. I'm talking about just, how are we gonna do this?
There's a lot to it.
Yeah, I mean, how do you tell the public? How do you handle the, you know, if we're gonna keep Republic, you know, what about the existing toters? I mean, there's, there's a number of moving parts here.
And we're gonna, we're gonna have some public pushback on this.
Oh, yeah.
Too much before the next council meeting, like, actually right before the meeting?
I don't think that would be enough time.
Do you have anything planned before the next meeting on the 5th?
The only concern with that is then we do have a hard stop at 7:30. I don't know, you know, I don't know how early we want to start.
All right, well.
What about next Monday?
What is it, 22nd? Yeah, I can do, I can do the 22nd.
Brian, does that work?
I'm looking, yes.
What time?
Yeah, the time.
Well, you're the chair, you make the shot.
Kevin? I'll try to make it easy on you.
I'm good. You know, it's, I'm here all day.
What time, what time are we talking on the 22nd? 4:30?
Or earlier?
No, 4:30 will, I'll, I'll, I'll be there for 4:30.
Sounds good.
Am I on the committee?
No, but you want, but I, I would assume that most members of council are gonna want to have, you know, an idea what's going on for this one, but 4:30 is fine with me, Brian, as well.
Now, the question is, are we gonna meet in person since it's in that window, or what do we think?
I would prefer to meet in person.
So would I.
Council chambers?
4:30 on the 15th?
22nd.
22nd.
Today's the 15th, yeah.
Sorry.
Uh, council chambers, then?
Good with me, Brian?
Good with me.
Cool.
So do I need to?
Check the availability of the room.
Oh, would I?
We'll assume that it's available. We'll clear it out if we can. We'll assume that it's available. We'll clear it out if we can, if we need to.
And 4:30?
4:30, March 22nd. Utilities meeting regarding the matter. Is that a motion, Brian? That's a motion.
I may be second.
Moved and seconded to set a utilities committee meeting for Monday, March 22nd at 4:30 PM in city council chambers to discuss solid waste services. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Kevin, any idea whether you have some indication back from Republic by that time?
Uh, I asked for, um, their proposal. Uh, I preferred that they get it to me next week, if not into the following week. So, um, I probably by the, or, excuse me, by this week, if not into next week. So hopefully I'll have something before the end of this week.
Okay, very good. Let's move on to page two of our agenda for tonight. We're up to agenda item 12, which is proposed resolution four, 2021, authorizing establishing a new fund known as the Joint Economic Development District Fund within the financial records of the city of Slovenia. Mr. Schreuer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, this is basically just to set up a, a new fund for the recently created JED, um, that we have with the Slovene Township for Oakleaf Village. Um, and this is just the bookkeeping, uh, accounting slash bookkeeping, uh, to keep it all separate from the city's books. Um, there's two steps to this. The first step is council passing this resolution. And then we have to apply it to the state to, to allow us to create that fund and then we'll be ready to go. This is the first time since I've been here that we've had to create a new fund, so it doesn't happen all the time. But it's, it's administration's recommendation to pass this resolution.
Question, I know that in the JED, or I recall that the JED allows, uh, the city to account for its time invested and, and, uh, util- utilize the expense from that time investment and, and pull from that fund before it's distributed amongst the, uh, city and township. Is that allowable the way this legislation is written?
Yeah, we, we, we will collect, it's 2% is what we take right off the top. And yeah, that, this, this will all be taken care of in this fund.
Okay, great.
Apologies if I missed this earlier, but what is the difference between what we can spend these funds on versus the funds that are elsewhere at the city?
There is no difference.
Okay, we just want to keep the numbers separate so we can know what's coming in?
Yeah, there, some money, we're going to be the ones distributing the money back to the township to split. Um, and we also have to set up a maintenance fund for Oakleaf Village to do certain things with, that they can do with their funds. Um, it's just a matter of keeping the bookkeeping separate from ours.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And the auditor has to approve this?
Yes. But the first step is council has to approve it first. Cause that, this resolution goes down with the request form that I fill out, uh, to the state. And then typically, uh, I, I, I don't foresee that ever being an issue, but it is, it is the second step that we have to do.
Well, it'll be interesting if the auditor can get one right.
All right, we do have resolution four, 2021 in your council packets. Mr. Fry, if you're ready to read this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce by title only resolution number four dash 2021. Resolution authorizing and establishing a new fund known as the Joint Economic Development District Fund within the financial records of the city of Slovenia. I move approval of resolution four dash 2021 as an emergency measure.
Second.
It is been moved and seconded for passage of resolution number four, 2021 as an emergency measure. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries and resolution number four, 2021 is enacted as an emergency measure. Moving on to agenda item 13, we gave Kevin a breather, but now he's back to talk about a new utility billing program. Mr. Aller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yes, for several years we have been using, uh, various software packages, um, in the utilities department and they all do have different functions, uh, within the department. Um, unfortunately, some of them don't play well, uh, with the others. And, uh, getting them to, uh, communicate and utilize the same information is, is bothersome at times. Um, we have four different programs, uh, that all do different functions, uh, in the department. And, um, the main system that we have, uh, which is, uh, provided by the firm Software Solutions, um, is an older, uh, program and is not, uh, as user friendly for either our staff or, uh, customers. Um, we're taking a look at a, at a product called, uh, MuniLink. Uh, it's provided, uh, uh, the parent company is Link Incorporated. Um, and they specialize in the, uh, utility billing arena. Um, and as the name implies, municipal utility, uh, arena. Um, that program would enable us to hand, it will handle all of the functions of our current four separate programs and ought to be all within, uh, just the one, uh, program from MuniLink. Um, the method that our staff goes through in getting to accounts, um, and being able to check, uh, electronic payments and things, things of that nature. Now they have to go between two, sometimes three different programs and look up the same account. Um, uh, just because of the way the systems work. With MuniLink, it's all one. They call up the account and they can tell exactly what's happened on that account. Um, there are some, uh, reconciliation and, uh, payment, uh, timeliness, timeliness of payments, uh, on our, some of our electronic payments. If they're done towards the end of the day, sometimes they'll don't, don't get registered till the next day. Um, that is bothersome for end of day reconciliation as well as if somebody is paying on the last day before a shut off or a late charge. Um, they can be on the shut off list even though they actually got the bill paid the day before only because it didn't show up on our records. That is removed with MuniLink. You make the payment, it shows up right away immediately. Um, those are some of the things, um, that, that it's, that, there's obviously a lot of, uh, things involved with the programming that, um, you know, to, to go into too much detail. But it also offers some benefits to our citizens on them being able to take a look at how much water they did actually use. They can go online. They can see exactly how much water they used, what their bills were. Um, uh, they can take a look, compare it to the previous month, compare it to the previous year. Um, it, it enables them some ability to take a look at what, uh, their accounts have been doing. So, um, we talked about the online payments being immediately, uh, applied to their accounts. Um, and it's also, uh, another good thing and a big thing that we don't have right now, um, that I think would be benefit, I don't think, I, I believe it will be beneficial, um, is our ability to communicate with the, with the citizens more. If we have, if we're coming up near the, uh, uh, deadline for payments, we can, uh, send messages to all of those that haven't been paid. Um, if we have a water main break in a neighborhood, we can, uh, send messages, uh, to all the people in that neighborhood. If we're going to have system-wide, uh, hydrant flushing, uh, programs, we're concerned about red water in some areas. We can send notices to, to all of those accounts. Uh, so our communication with our customers will be, uh, we don't have that right now. Um, and that will be enabled with, with this program. So, um, we would like to, you, you know, it's, if, if it's something that council seems to be comfortable with, ultimately we'll have to come back to you for approval of the, of the contract. Um, uh, and, uh, so I just, I leave it to council's discretion. Um, if, uh, you would like us to just come back, uh, with that approval. Um, or, uh, if you would like to see a demonstration. They have offered to do a demonstration to show you what the capabilities of the, of the product are. Um, we've seen that, um, uh, plus some, uh, in, in taking a look at this. Um, and I leave it to council's discretion. It is taking us from a cost of those four programs together are in the neighborhood of about, uh, a little over $18,000. The MuniLink system will take us to an expense of $25,000, but I-
Per annum?
Per annum, yes, per annum. Um, I believe that that cost difference, I, I believe that the benefits that we get with the MuniLink system are, are worth that cost difference, um, and, uh, can be absorbed within our, our water and sewer funds.
Page two of Mr. Aller's report was not included in the council packets. The clerk emailed it out to all of you late this afternoon. If you haven't found it already, you might want to take a look at it. Um, there's no council action needed tonight. Um, but Mr. Aller is asking for direction if you'd like to refer it to committee, have them come in and do a demonstration or just have him return with legislation when he's ready to ask for approval of this system.
Mr. Aller, I'd like to, uh, just, I'd like to have a sit down with you to understand better the rollout um, and, uh, implementation plan of this and then possibly a demonstration. I don't know if anyone else on the committee has that interest, but I know I do.
I'd like to see it as well. Cause I, I've never, no disrespect to Mr. McCann, I've never seen a utility software package didn't create 10 times more work on the front end than what they say. If they say it's a thousand hours, you make it 10,000 hours.
That's where I'm going. I haven't been through too many of these.
Yeah, the transition is definitely going to be, uh, a challenge. Uh, we're aware of that. Um, they have done, uh, several accounts where they've transitioned from SSI to, um, MuniLink. Um, but yeah, that's always a, that's always a, a, uh, uh, challenge to say the least, so.
I want to know whether they're going to be able to convert from our system to theirs or whether it's going to be, have to be a manual conversion, et cetera, so.
So it sounds like we could have a committee meeting with a demonstration. Is that what you're seeing?
Yeah.
Yeah, and that, and that's fine. And, uh, let me, if, if it's okay with council, let me, um, let me get with the, uh, vendor and our staff and, uh, at the next council meeting, um, uh, can kind of let you know either prior to council meetings or something like that, uh, uh, some dates, uh, that, uh, they would be, uh, available. Um, this isn't, this isn't as critical of an issue timing wise as the solid waste, uh, issue is. So if, uh, we, if it takes us a couple more weeks to get this put together, that's not a, a real big deal.
Did you have a timeframe that you were looking for? Is there an expiration date on the software support or?
No, we just have to, just basically have to be ready to go. Our intent is to be, uh, do the implementation in the first part of the fourth quarter so that we're working through, we have about three or four months, uh, to have it fine tuned, so to speak. Um, and then, uh, January of '22, we are off and running and we have all the bugs worked out.
Sounds to me, Mr. Aller, like you're going to be a professional juggler for the next six or eight months. With everything going on, and then you're taking on software conversion.
It is busy. Um, it is busy. We just, now's the time, SSI is now there have going through a, a large update that's requiring us to do some things. Um, and with that update is, we, we took a look at, is, is now the time to make a change and, and, uh, we believe it is, so.
Do we need to make a referral at this time, Mr. Mayor, or do we wait until Kevin comes back to us with dates?
I think we can wait for Mr. Aller to come back with some proposed dates and you can then refer it to committee. Let's see if he brings back more information prior to that.
Thank you, Mr. Aller. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
All right, on to agenda item 14. We have a notice of a new D1 beer for on-premises consumption until 1:00 AM at a, at Sandals Nail Spa. What goes on at those places? Um, Captain, any reports or issues with this particular nail spa?
No, Mr. Mayor, um, we've had that nail spa under another location. It appears they have moved and it appears to be the same owners.
All council needs to do at this time is to indicate whether they request a local public hearing or not. Um, not near a school, not near church, not a problem owner. Um, so probably don't need to request one for a D1, but that's up to council. Mr. Fry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll, I'll make a motion to not request a, uh, local public hearing for the, uh, for the liquor control board, uh, transfer of this license.
Second.
Been moved and seconded not to request a public hearing for the Sandals Nail Spa new D1 and D2 permit. All in favor, favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries and the clerk can let the state know that. Moving on to agenda item 15, we actually have, uh, three items that are zoning issues here. Two of them are coming back from the Plan Commission last Wednesday. Uh, the first one that we're going to take a look at is special use permit one, 2021. This is for the, uh, 130 foot high wireless communication facility with a 10 foot high lightning rod behind Northview High School. Um, you had requested that the Plan Commission pursue answers on three specific points about construction of the tower and that it be maintained and certified annually and that a bond be placed for the removal of that tower when it becomes obsolete. Um, the owner or the, the requister has agreed to all of those. Um, city council or our Plan Commission did face some health and safety issues during that meeting. Um, after some discussion, I said that was beyond the scope of the Planning Commission to rule on those. They can rule on, um, zoning issues, but I thought health and safety should probably come back to city council during a public meeting or public hearing situation. However, I was told during the meeting, and I think it's been confirmed by the law director, that by federal statute, health and safety is not a reason that we can turn it down. Um, so that's an interesting position to be in. Uh, Mr. Hanum and Mr. McCann attended that portion of the Planning Commission meeting via Zoom and we appreciate that. Um, I think the only business we do to do tonight is to set a public hearing for this. And the clerk is recommending either April 19th or a council or a time after that. Again, we have a 30-day, uh, notice requirement plus the time to get it into the newspaper, so April 19th will work for that. Mr. Hanum or Mr. McCann, I don't know if you have any comments at this time?
I, I have one comment and that is that I think the minutes of the Planning Commission, um, uh, may have captured the subs, may have captured the, uh, tone of my comment, but, uh, I think, uh, mischaracterized my position. There was a discussion about, um, whether I was satisfied with the, uh, presentation of the, um, applicants with regard to the questions I asked. And the minutes reflect that I said that I was satisfied and I don't think that's correct. I think what I said was that I was interested, that I was, uh, open to additional comments submitted as part of the public hearing process, but that I was, um, uh, favorably inclined to what I had heard during the meeting. In other words, I have not closed off my, uh, my- My position on this until the public hearing, as I think would be appropriate. We'll see what happens there. But beyond that, we did.
Before we move on, let me write down how you'd like the minutes changed. I just got these today as you did. The last sentence says, Mr. Hanum said that he was, I can add the words. Favorably inclined at this point, is that what you wanted to say?
The response opened, but. Open to. Receiving public comments during the. Public comment period.
All right, would you like to?
I'll send you something on that. Yes, I'll send you something on that.
All right, very good.
Particularly since we get sued now on the our actions.
Those meeting minutes won't be approved until the next Plan Commission meeting, so there's plenty of time to do that.
Okay, so I'll send you some amendments to the language, which I think, and I don't know, and and I'm pretty confident I was pretty careful about that.
I think you were.
Was saved. It's not like you can change it. It's already done and you can go back and hear it.
You can, but I'm a little concerned about the.
And I'm pretty sure you said you were satisfied. I was listening.
Well, we'll listen. We'll go back and listen. And maybe maybe that's what I need to do is go back and listen.
We meet next on April fourteenth, and that's when those meeting minutes will be approved by the Plan Commission, so. I'm open to changes to make you comfortable, Mr. Hanum, as long as they reasonably reflect what actually took place.
Well, do we have that recording available?
Oh, sure.
Okay, so maybe let me let me go back and listen to the recording and see what I said, but I thought I was a little more careful than that.
All right.
Katie would know better. I mean. Anyway, okay. The point is.
On the line, Katie. I'm sorry. I didn't recognize you earlier.
That's okay. I was on the YouTube versus this.
I wouldn't know who was on the YouTube, okay.
I was on the YouTube for most of it until people started talking about me by name. Anyway. So the hearing, a hearing on the nineteenth.
For information, we're also have a public hearing to set for the bike parking ordinance as well. Both are eligible for the nineteenth. I wouldn't think the bike parking is going to take much time, but this cell tower one might.
Doug, you're muted.
Okay, I accidentally put my papers on top of that. Sorry about that. I don't think we want to do both of those on the same evening. I'm afraid that either we either we'd have to start. Very early on the nineteenth to do both. Or. We'd have to do them. And I guess we could do that. I mean, if we wanted to start it for at like. Five thirty, we could maybe do, we could stack them both. I do the bike first and then the. And then the cell tower afterwards. With. The realization that the, we might have to go a little over. I think we're going to have a lot of comments on the cell tower. Just reading the documents that we've received. Yesterday and today. I mean, I'll defer to everybody else in terms of scheduling. Or our law director in particular. Because we've.
Remind council, it is not a hard stop at seven thirty. We can slide into the council meeting, but I wouldn't want to go later than eight o'clock or so before we start the council meeting.
Neither would I.
Will we notify the school board about the the public hearing for the cell tower? Send them a notice just to.
They're the property owner. They'll be on the list of mealings as well.
Did they have any public, did they have a public hearing on this? I'm sorry. I was, I would, I didn't mean to speak over you, Mr. Mayor. Did the school board have a public hearing on this? And did they, do we know if they had any opposition?
Um, I had Mr. Sanford begin to look into that. Do you got any answers on that, Bill?
I do not, Mr. Mayor, but I'm going to see the superintendent tomorrow.
I have a question. I know that we're not allowed to make a judgment on the health and safety issues, but is the school board allowed to make a judgment on the health and safety issues? Or is that just straight across the board and nobody can make a decision on that?
Well, I I want to read this legal opinion before I acknowledge that. I know Leslie's already figured it out, but.
I, Mr. Abercrombie is having one of his associates put together something, something about that. And then I'm going to double check that once I get that. I, they're the property owners, so they could have said no on any basis, really. They don't really have to have a reason, but I, that's what Mr. Sanford is going to talk to the superintendent about tomorrow is just to find out what their process was and what board meeting it was discussed at. Because I, I didn't hear anything about it until they came to count or until the especially use permit application was submitted, but.
For those of you that didn't listen to the Plan Commission meeting, that's the first time I've ever heard. At a Plan Commission meeting, somebody being accused of practicing law without a license and asking for testimony to be struck from the minutes.
Who sold tickets?
The law director present, and if that's a tone that's set, we're going to have an interesting public hearing.
Yeah, I think we will have an interesting public hearing and. I I did not sense any illegal practice of law, but what do I know? I'm just a. I haven't been doing it this long, so.
And Mrs. Brining makes a good point that. The property owner did not have to agree to the lease for whatever reason they choose. It's not a health and safety issue, so I have to think that they're not concerned about the health and the safety issues related to this. And I believe their lease is already signed. Is that correct? No.
Yes, that Mr. Abercrombie did say that it was signed and he was going to get me a copy of the memorandum of lease that had been recorded, but I don't have that yet either. As soon as I get that, though, I will pass that along as well.
Maybe a question that Mr. Sanford could pass on to the superintendent is that the. The school board have those two speakers that the Planning Commission had? Did they get all that information and were they forwarded all the documents that we were?
I believe it was signed before that.
I think the reason we got the speakers is because it was published in the newspaper as a news article, and I don't remember reading anything about it. During the school board's consideration.
So, so Doug, are you thinking a six PM kickoff for this event?
Uh, do we want to do them both on the same evening? If we're going to do them both on the same evening, I think I would start at five thirty. Uh, and then assume that we will do the. Tower issue second.
Yeah, it it just seems to me that we should start the, because the tower one is going to be the one with the most focus, obviously. We should start that at a specific time, and if we get to the bikes, great. If not, we kick that to another meeting a couple weeks hence.
Well, I was thinking we could do the bikes at five thirty and do a public notice for the. Tower at five thirty as well and just move from one right into the other. But you're right, we will have. What I'm pretty confident of is that we will have some significant public comment on the tower.
Yeah, I don't, that that works for me, too.
Mr. Mayor or Leslie, do you have any thoughts about that?
These will probably be in person public hearings. We can offer a YouTube on it, but I think we're going to have people in council chambers for them. I would like to do the bike one first because we may have some property owners downtown that would like to talk about it, and I don't want to hold them captive. Starting at five thirty, so I think it's better to go with that one first. I don't think that's controversial and then move into the cell tower.
I'm thinking about it the same way you are.
Five thirty?
Yeah, so what what we would do is notice both of them to start at five thirty, realizing that. The bike one will go first.
All right, why don't we have a motion to set the one for SUP one, two thousand and twenty one first, Mr. Hanum?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would move that we establish a public hearing on SUP. One dash. Two thousand twenty one. For April fifteenth at five thirty PM.
April nineteenth, not fifteenth, right?
Monday, April nineteenth.
I'm sorry, for Monday, April nineteenth at five thirty AM.
Did you sec, somebody seconded?
Seconded at five thirty AM. Hold on. I said.
I thought I said PM. Did I mess that up?
Yes.
Okay, let's start over. I move that we establish a public hearing on SUP. One dash twenty twenty one on April nineteenth. Twenty twenty one. At five thirty PM in council chambers and as otherwise appropriate.
On Zoom also.
Moved and seconded to set and advertise a public hearing for SUP. One, two thousand and twenty one for Monday, April nineteenth, five thirty PM in the city council chambers. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries and the clerk is ordered to publicize the same. Moving on to agenda item sixteen, the Plan Commission made some comments. About the bike parking ordinance. I've sent that back to you. The changes are listed in a letter here back from the Plan Commission Secretary. That one also needs to set a public hearing. Knows, and we're going to do it the same night, so Mr. Hanum, need a motion for that one as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we establish a public hearing on the proposed. Approval and recommendation of. Ordinance number twelve dash twenty twenty one from the. Planning Commission for April nineteenth at five thirty PM in council chambers.
Second.
Moved and seconded to set a public hearing date of Monday, April nineteenth, five thirty PM in council chambers. For the proposed ordinance twelve, two thousand and twenty one, amending chapter eleven fifty seven, off street parking, bicycle parking. All in favor of that indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and the clerk is directed to publish the same. All right. Moving on to agenda item seventeen, we have a new zoning application, SUP two, two thousand and twenty one. That's in, this is for Monroe Street. I'm identifying it as the old attorney's office building next to the Wendy's. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, for sure.
Kevin, can you talk about this? I I this was confusing to me. I guess I'm just not smart enough.
They are proposing, actually, it's kind of a multi-use. Proposal that they have there, but one of the uses is a church, a small church that'll have services on on Sundays, obviously. And because of that church, it's it comes within the SUP. Qualifications. They're having a. It's it's an odd building. We are still working through some of the parking requirements and things of that nature with this. But. In our discussions with her, she wished to move forward in requesting the SUP, so.
So all we need to do tonight is to refer to the Planning Commission, correct?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I would move. That we refer SUP two dash twenty twenty one to the Planning Commission for its review and recommendation.
Second.
Moved and seconded to refer SUP two, two thousand and twenty one to the Plan Commission for their review and recommendation. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. We have already completed agenda item eighteen. So we are down to agenda item nineteen, which is committee reports, any committee reports to be made at this time. Or committee referrals, agenda item twenty. Hearing none, we are on to agenda, added agenda, and item twenty one, which is. The federal legislation that recently passed. I assume most or all of you read about it in the newspaper. I had only a week or two notice of the scope of that grant money that was coming along. And I believe the facts in the paper were pretty good unless Mr. Schreier has an update. City of Sylvania will receive approximately three point eight million dollars of funds. Split between this year and next year. The other municipal cities are receiving similar amounts. Whereas the previous one was based on population, this one is based on need and population. And as a result, the city of Toledo is receiving about three and a half times per resident. What the city of Sylvania and most of the suburbs are receiving. They're receiving about a hundred and eighty nine million, I think it was, two thirds of an annual budget, just an unbelievable amount of money. They will also receive it over two budget years. Ours amounted to about two hundred dollars or so. A resident, a little under two hundred dollars a resident, depending on the new population. Theirs amounted to nearly seven hundred dollars or seven hundred and fifty dollars per resident. Based on need, so I can just imagine what larger cities like Cleveland and Chicago and New York and LA are receiving. These funds are not as encumbered as much as the previous funds. I'm told, but I haven't read the legislation yet, but I'm told that you cannot use them to reduce taxes. Other than that, I don't know if there's a lot of constraints. Mr. Schreier, you have anything to add?
No, I don't have anything.
So the, because I remember that we had some questions for the last round of money, which was obviously dramatically less than this number.
This is about twice as much as the three previous phases combined.
Right, so. I've never seen federal money that doesn't have strings. And I guess that's the reason I wanted to bring it up. Do we know how much it is? And what are the strings? What are the limitations on timing? Do we need to spend it by a certain point in time? I understand, Mayor, your thought process that we can supposedly can't reduce taxes, although I'm not sure exactly how that works. It's the golden rule. He has the gold rules, so. I'm just trying to get a sense of, you know, this is an ordnantly large sum of money even for us. It is the city of Sylvania. I'm just trying to understand what the ramifications are because there's a. You know, there's a lot of different things that you can do with three point eight million dollars spread over two years.
I've been thinking that we might. I've been thinking that we might want to put this towards capital improvements that benefit everybody in the area. And obviously, a large number that we have to come up with is $3 million for the expressway interchange, our portion of it. That seems like a possibility. Another one might be downtown street scape improvements. But I don't think we need to decide. I don't, until we actually can read the legislation. I got a notice from the Ohio Municipal League today. There's going to be a Zoom call on this in the next couple of days. We'll know more about it after that. This legislation was not widely distributed before it was passed. It's been hard to get a copy of it even after it's passed. So we need to read it, get more information. But we need, I think we should remain open to accepting the money. That's, it's coming.
I'm not, I'm not concerned about accepting the money, Mayor. I'm just trying to figure out what the strings are and when we can get a sense of this, because I've seen other funds in the past in my, in my work, that they give you a bunch of money and they say, okay, you got 60 days to spend it, and there's no possible way that you can spend it in the timeframe. So I'm just, I just don't want to, I just don't want to let, if we've got a limited timeframe, I don't want to let it lag. If we do have, if we don't have a limited timeframe, then that's fine. We can, we can lay out a much more deliberative process.
Well, we have some, if we need some ideas, we've got some cement streets that Kevin is very familiar with, that we will never fix. We will never fix except with money from heaven, so.
And that's the reason I wanted to bring it up, because $3.8 million is a lot of money, but what you just said is two or three times that number, Doug.
About two, I think.
Yeah, it was 5 million or maybe more. I would recommend we charge Mr. Schreier and Mrs. Brining to research this, review the legislation, listen to the Ohio Municipal seminar yet later this week, and get back to us with what they find out. And we don't need to wait three weeks. If we get some documentation as to what's going on, we'll share it to you in advance of that.
Well, I know Kevin knows how to spend money, so we got to keep him in that loop.
You're going to give me a complex, Doug.
Hey, we spend money better than any other local government I've ever seen. So, and I give you a lot of credit for that.
Okay. Mark, I appreciate you putting it on the agenda. Anything else about it you'd like to discuss tonight?
No, that's, I think that's an appropriate approach, Mayor, to look at this and get the additional information. And once we have more information, then we can go from there.
And Toby, I'd like, once you get some more information, if you get some guidelines, let's send it out to City Council so they're aware of it as well as we are.
Sure.
All right. That brings us to the end of our agenda for tonight. In the information items, C and D were emailed to you today, and we're already, we're going to make some proposed changes to the Planning Commission meeting minutes. Also included in your council packets are the fourth quarter management reports for putting into your binder with the other management reports. I encourage you to do that. Beyond that, I have no further items. Is there, there's no further agenda items? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries and this council stands adjourned until its next regularly scheduled meeting three weeks from tonight on April 5th, 2021. Hopefully, we'll see many of you in person. Thank you and have a nice evening.